One change to the agenda that I'm aware of. Under calendar, item 14B will be deleted. Any other changes or additions to the agenda?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve, the Commander.
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Special presentations and appearances message from Lake of the Woods Association. Mr. Wilkes.
Is this where I go?
Please, yes.
Actually, wherever you want to go.
Well, yeah.
It's your house. That could have a lot of meetings, couldn't it?
It's called a special appearance. You can deal with it any way you want.
Thank you. I think I transmitted to you guys, or Phil gave you a copy of the speech, so you have it in front of you, so I'll try not to read it, but I don't know that everyone's seen it. But on behalf of the Board of Directors and the members here, welcome to the Orange County Board of Supervisors, to the Lake of the Woods Clubhouse. We look forward to this meeting every year, so we would like you to continue coming here to have a meeting as the years go by. Our district representatives, Lee Frame, Jim Crozier, Board Representative, School Board Representative Jim Hopkins, and Sheriff Amos regularly come here and give us reports and information that's very valuable, and we hope that you get valuable information when you come and talk to us. Our General Manager has regular communications with Brian David, the County Administrator, and those kind of interactions maintain and improve the relationship between the county and our community. I want to take a few moments to talk about some of our major concerns. GWAP is one of them. The big thing with us is buffering. There is a proposal at some point to redirect Route 20 to, I think it's west on Route 3. And that's a fine idea, but when you do that, you will be coming in closer to Lake of the Woods, and we would like you to at least try to champion, or help us champion, the idea of buffer walls along there for noise and noise pollution and that sort of thing. We also have, we think a sound wall is called for there, but, you know, if wishes were fishes, we'll deal with that later on. In our longer-range plans, we also have a third gate planned further down Route 3 across from Rapidan Road. That's on hold for now, because as somebody keeps telling me, this community hasn't felt the pain yet of the traffic that we have. I'm not sure that's true, but at some point, we do need to figure out about our third gate and either move forward with it or try to relocate it. And should we try to put in that third gate down there, we would ask that you all help us with that, too. We also had recently a report from an ad hoc fencing committee that we had here, and that committee recommended a fence along Route 3 on our property, starting around Keaton's Lake and going all the way down Route 3 to the length of our property, which would be past Rapidan Road and up that way. And it's a different kinds of fences depending on what part of Route 3 we're talking about. Some of it is just a wire and post, some of it is anatized iron fences, aluminum, I should say. But it's a nice plan, but we don't know yet where that's going to be in terms of when we approach doing it. It's not in our proposed budget for next year, but it could be in the five-year plan for sooner than, sooner than five years, I'll put it that way. Stormwater runoff is still a big issue in Lake of the Woods. We have several big projects that we're doing related to stormwater management. One of them is our Flat Run Forbay. That's out for bid now. We should be getting the bids back in mid-December, and we'll see where we're at in terms of who bid on it and how much and what kind of timeline we have. But that will do a lot to help clean up the lake with sediment and the health of the lake. We're also interested in the VDOT project to realign Flat Run Road up by that, up by the golf course and that curve. And we're interested in that because, as we understand it, there could be a retention pond of some kind put up that way, and we're, we would hope that whatever is done to realign Flat Run Road will not cause more stormwater issues for Lake of the Woods. But we'll, we have an interest in that for that reason. We also have another project within Lake of the Woods covering a 50-acre area, starting from Hollyfield Park going all the way down to our small marina. And we're shortly going to get an estimate, or we've gotten an estimate, to fix that situation. It's about a million and a half dollars, and it's a multi-year project. So we would ask your help where you can in that project. We just got our 30% design for that project, and we have to review it. Another one of our pushes is Airbnb's. One of our goals is to determine how many we have and are they paying our local assessments? And I think that you all should have an interest on the Board of Supervisors on that, because there's a tax involved that the county, they're supposed to pay the county. So far, we've identified 14. We've mailed letters to nine of them that are not in compliance. We've got three responses, so six of the 14 are in compliance. If the county has an interest in this matter, I would ask that you contact Phil at the General Manager's office, and he'll be happy to coordinate with you and provide any information along those lines. Okay, now, communications upgrades. We appreciate the county allowing us to upgrade our radio system so it'll be compatible with the county's new system. This will provide needed direct communication between emergency services, including the Sheriff's Department, and Lake of the Woods, because in some instances, when there's an emergency call, our scope officers are dispatched to the scene first to check it out, and sometimes they can avoid having the sheriff's deputy come on all the way in to deal with it, because they deal with it. In addition, they respond to the emergencies much quicker, and, you know, we can get help where needed more directly and a little bit quicker, I guess. So that's all I have to say. That's not that much. So, thank you for your attention, and we hope, we look forward to talking to you when we have dinner after the meeting, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. As is customary, we have a public comment period as part of our agenda, and that is the next item. Anyone who would like, or has signed up already to speak is welcome to do so at this time. Do we have anyone signed up yet, Allison?
We do not have anyone signed up.
Okay. This is the last call, then. If the lights start blinking, yes, sir?
I would like to ask when the county or the state will take over road maintenance of the road that goes from Walmart out to Route 3, which currently is just a base course and very hard on vehicles.
I can comment on that.
Sure.
I think you're actually referring to the road next to Germana Heights Apartments, at the traffic light there. Okay. That is still a private road. It cannot be turned over to the state until all the construction on Germana Heights townhouses is complete, and it will go automatically in the process. So probably about a year to 18 months is how long it takes to get it paved and then taken into the state system. The road behind Walmart itself, A&amp;K Boulevard, and the road that goes right in front of Walmart and the gas station are literally weeks away from being taken into the state system.
Thank you very much.
Yes, indeed.
Okay, there can be more than one lottery winner. Yes, sir.
We have a back gate. And right now, I don't know who's, we've been trying, from what I understand, to get GPS to quit sending people to the back gate. I was wondering if you could, I said, any color whatsoever to send people to the front gate instead of the back gate, because whenever a truck has to back up, that means everybody has to back up on 401. It's very, very dangerous. So if you asked to look into that, maybe fill this out.
Do you know if it's one particular app, or is it all, or what your sense is to...
If anybody has somebody deliver anything, if they don't tell them to come to the front gate, they'll automatically, if they go GPS, they come to the back.
It says on there, okay.
If they have no pass to get in, they have to back out.
Okay.
It's a very short back.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. One of the things with the GPS providers, Google, Apple, they typically will not change. Our tourism manager has run this course with people getting bad directions on getting to any of our attractions. VDOT does have some signage I've seen them use to not rely on GPS for this access, so we'll make note of it, and we'll contact our resident engineer to see if there might be some opportunity there.
These two gentlemen would share the lottery winnings three ways. Anybody else? That's it? You get to keep half?
There you go.
All right. Thank you. We'll close the public comment period. Okay, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, new business. Awarded contract for civil engineering services.
Stephanie.
Good evening, gentlemen. The county released a contract for stormwater management in late August. We received eight responses, and the committee interviewed multiple prospects and have decided to award contracts to Sullivan, Donahue, and Ingalls, A. Morton, Thomas &amp; Associates, Draper, Aiden Associates, and Rinker Design Associates. The contract would be for one year with four one-year renewals, and it will be as needed, so at the direction of staff as to how often they are used during that time period.
I would make the motion to accept all four of them.
I'll second, but for discussion.
Okay. Are either one of these doing the actual help of the design of the, of the system for the county, or are they just the engineers that are going to do the work?
Yes, sir. They have the ability to assist with that. I believe we were going to look into Draper, Aiden, helping us start that up.
Help us with the design of the, of the system.
Yes, sir. And how we're going to implement it and work with the staff. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, member of the Board, one quick thing. If you all could pull your mics up a little closer, that might be helpful.
We're doing just fine where we're at.
Here we go. One other thing on this matter, as you all recall, over the last number of years, a lot of developers, a lot of landowners and property owners have become increasingly frustrated with the Virginia Department of Environmental Qualities Administration of the Virginia Stormwater Management Regulations, meaning that in order to do projects that are more than an acre in size, they've got to comply with the Virginia Stormwater Management Regulations. That requires them to interface with the Office in Woodbridge or Richmond. It is taking upwards of a year for projects to reach approval. We have, we will have approved site plans and all the development plans in a matter of weeks, and then the development community is waiting for something that is not discretionary. They, they're going to comply, but it's slowing things down. The Board has wrestled with what to do, because the state actually mandated local governments to do their own stormwater management program, but at the last minute in 2013 Assembly Session, they decided because of the pushback from localities as an unfunded mandate to have the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality take, administer this program. Since then, because of short staffing, because of just the time it's taking, localities are starting to hear more and more from landowners and the development community that it's not working anymore. And so the Board had me do some research of what it would mean for us to start administering it locally. The solution that's before you tonight is to have these four firms available. They'll be on a, on a rate basis, that the development community will be charged the full price of what it costs, and they'll, these firms are professional engineers. They'll review the plans to make sure they're compliant with state regulations, local regulations for stormwater, will provide site inspections to be sure that they're being, stormwater management facilities are being installed properly, and then after completion, that they're being maintained. You all agree that this was a responsible way of really doing something that the state is failing at? I'll be that frank. And where this is, these contracts will get us going. The first step in this process is to come back to you all, probably at a work session with an ordinance, that would be the implementation ordinance for that. Then, once that's done, then we'll start into the administration of the program with these firms. Having four firms allows us to geographically be responsive to development with stormwater management facilities, whether here in the east or the west end of the county. And also, these firms are sized based on, some stormwater management facilities are not that complicated, others could be pretty complicated, and each one of these firms bring a certain skill set and perspective that I think we'll find useful. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to give you guys a little background of where we are with this.
With the imminent efforts going on, the Germana Wilderness Area Plan, last thing we needed is to have any projects involved with that being delayed a year or so because of Virginia DEQ not able to respond. So we wanted to make sure that we were ready to respond for anything like that.
Yeah, the short version is DEQ isn't doing their job, and so, you know, it gets passed down to us, unfortunately. Question, are any of the four firms, do they have separate specialties that they provide us, or are they, any of the four could handle most, all the topics involved with stormwater?
Yes, sir. They all are able to handle the broad topics, but they do have specialties in certain areas, which is why we chose these four.
Okay.
They're all relatively, also geographically close to us, so we felt we would have a prompt-response time as well.
Do you have with you the information of where they're, where they're, either have an office or headquarters, whatever, just so we get a sense of how they're dispersed? If not, you can provide it to us later. I'm just, I was curious. I know one of the considerations was responsiveness and...
Yes, sir. They're all within a two-hour response time, if not less than that.
Okay.
I think Sullivan, Donahue's in Spotsylvania, Morton, Thomas is in Richmond.
Everywhere.
And Draper, Aiden's in Charlottesville, and Rinker, I'm not sure.
And I believe Morton, Thomas has a Fredericksburg location as well.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any further discussion, comments?
Just, I guess one quick comment in response to one of the questions we had. As far as VDOT realigning 601, you can rest assured that there's not going to be additional stormwater runoff. Currently, VDOT is the number-one target of DEQ in the entire state, and they probably have the strictest guidelines to go by. So that's very, very crucial there. And one other comment as far as going with these engineering firms, at some point, we will have to expand our staff slightly within the Erosion Control Department because of the volume of paperwork that is required, because our, one individual has to go out on every inspection that DEQ currently goes out on, and they'll have to do the same thing with these engineering firms, and then the paperwork, as most of you can imagine, is immense, to say the least.
There's another question. This adds another layer of work.
It does.
At one point, it should have been DEQ staff along with county staff doing the paperwork and the site visits. Now we have an engineering firm sitting in the middle because DEQ fails to do their job.
Yes.
That's the last thing that the, that Orange County needs, is delays in driving our businessmen and developers up the wall because they can't get something accomplished.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're willing to make the trade-off of costing them extra to have the time.
Yeah. But, I mean, the, what was the place, the assisted living place down here has been hanged up for how long now?
Yes. They got extended, I believe, two times by DEQ, just...
And these are 45-day pops?
Yep.
And that's, that's unacceptable. Okay. We are where we are.
Okay.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Proceed.
Thank you. Thank you.
Let's see, I think you might be next on the list as well, the contract for snow and ice removal services.
Yes, sir. Staff released a bid for the snow and ice removal services for all six sections of the county in early October. We received four responses, two of which were the lowest and the most responsive bidders, and we're requesting your permission tonight to execute contracts with EasyCutter's Lawn Care and Landscaping and Synchronized Construction. They are our current contract holders as well.
Motion to approve. Okay.
I will second for discussion.
Okay. Proceed.
I would like it to be reinforced to EasyCutters that they step their game up.
Yes, sir.
We've, we've had a couple of issues on their grass cutting, and I'd like to make sure that we don't revisit that with the ice removal.
Yes, sir, we can do that. Thank you.
Is there performance language that exists, or do we need to beef that up? What do you...
They can just include me as a language for them, and it will be enforced.
Keep Crozier happy, is that the language?
We do have certain sections, sir, that require response time within a certain number of hours. For example, our public safety facility is in the airport, and then it has to be done to the specifications of the Director of Public Works.
Okay. Is EMS and fire departments high on that list?
Yes, sir, in the airport.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Also under new business item 6C, adoption of auxiliary list for the secondary year plan. Excuse me, we talked about roads, we're going to have one more conversation. Mr. David.
Ms. Simpson, who's been working on this since its beginning, I'll let her walk you through, please.
All right.
Members of the Board, in front of you, you have a copy of our current auxiliary list, which was adopted during the secondary six-year plan process last year. As I mentioned in my memo, I did do some research of road projects and concerns that had been brought to our attention by various citizens or VDOT or businesses over the last year since this plan was adopted, and I have in front of you two recommendations that could potentially be added to the auxiliary list. As a reminder, this is the list of projects that you would refer to as projects when your current secondary six-year plan are completed, or as new funding is available through the Virginia Department of Transportation. Ideally, you would refer to this list to pull projects from the auxiliary list to the actual secondary six-year plan. The two recommendations are Route 641, Liberty Mills Road, which would be a rural rustic project, meaning it's already a road that is state-maintained by the Virginia Department of Transportation, but it is currently a gravel road. So this rural rustic project would hard-surface a portion of the road based on VDOT's recommendation. And then Fieldstone Lane is also, I believe, Supervisory Crozier's district.
That's correct.
And if added to the list, it would be a potential rural addition, meaning that it's not currently in the second, or in the, yes, secondary system, but it would be improved to VDOT standards and then subsequently accepted into the system.
Yes, off of Old Dawfus Road. And it actually would take very, very little work to bring it up. It was originally built to state specs, and just because it sat there as a gravel road for a while, it just needs some very minor touch-up work.
Could it qualify for rural rustic, do you think?
Rural rustic probably is not a, because of how Mr. Saunders has described to us before, because it's not in the state system, it doesn't qualify for rural rustic.
Right.
It's easier to bring it into the state system as a rural addition. That would make sense, though, sir.
So they could bring it in, is it, is it a paved road now, or is it gravel?
No, it's a gravel road.
So they could bring it in as a gravel road and then make it rural rustic and paved?
Absolutely.
Allison, I had another question I'd like for you to do a little research on. It just so happened yesterday, it seemed like I have road conversations multiple days a week, I was talking to a constituent on one of the roads that happens to be, already be in our list, and the question was, would any of these roads qualify for cost-shared funds to bring them up to standards? If, in fact, the, the community in this case could come up with half of the money, having it be in our six-year plan prohibit it from qualifying from going down the path of those cost-shared funds? Because as I understand it, the cost-shared funds are a separate pool of money from both the auxiliary and the rural rustic. I couldn't answer the question, but I told the constituent I would raise the topic and try to get an answer. And I mentioned it tonight because one of the roads on our list here is, was the road that we were talking about.
Right. So certainly at the, at the Board's discretion on the revenue-sharing projects, because the application does have to be made in the county's name.
Right.
Any of those cost-sharing or revenue-sharing projects would have to channel through the Board for approval. But the scope of those projects is a lot wider than what you can put on the secondary six-year plan, so you could certainly apply for one of, a revenue-sharing project or a revenue-sharing application for one of the projects on the auxiliary list. If the project were already on the secondary six-year plan and already had funds allocated to it, I'd have to check with VDOT on if that would, you know, disqualify the project from either receiving revenue-sharing funds or, you know, continuing on the secondary six-year plan.
I can't imagine VDOT wouldn't buy off somebody else.
Hey, you're picking up part of the cost. Okay.
And actually, at VACO this past weekend, there was a discussion in the Transportation Committee regarding this, and absolutely, it can be, if you come up with the revenue sharing, the cost sharing, it can be moved, as long as the money has not already been earmarked.
Expensive.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Well, there, VDOT has done an estimate for this particular road in terms of bringing it up to standards, and the construction part of it, meaning entrances and culverts and widening and all those kind of things, was in the neighborhood of about $400,000. At the moment, the community's not prepared to find $200,000, but it involves about 50 homes, I think, roughly 50 homes. And so it's not completely out of question that at some point that they would be willing to do that, because right now, the, the thoughts of going through another winner with what they have on their private road is frankly spooking them.
Right.
They're really concerned about it. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Need a motion, I guess?
Yeah, I need a motion, too.
So moved.
All right. Second. Good.
And just to clarify, that is a motion to include the two additions.
Correct. All right. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes you down. All right, I see no old business. Department Director, Constitutional Officer reports, land, mobile radio update. Ms. Stephanie, please return. This will address one of the points made by Mr. Wilkes. At least in part.
Yes, sir. Thank you for the opportunity to come back and update you on our P25 radio system project. I want to take this opportunity to thank Chief Deputy LaCasse and our PSAP Director, Curry, for their continued support and work on this project as well. So as you recall, in early 2018, the county went out for solicitation to replace our current outdated communication system, which is used by our first responders. Our current system has a 17% effective coverage on the hip for our first responders. The new system that we've contracted with, with Harris Corporation, will have 95% coverage, 95% of the time. The system will be utilized by all the county first responders, so Sheriff's Office, Fire and EMS, and our PSAP employees, as well as the town of Gordonsville and the town of Orange, and the public school system transportation and their radio system within their schools. And as we heard earlier, the Lake of the Woods security is also receiving radios for this new system. The system is using a combination of fiber and microwave connectivity. It's util- It's utilizing two existing structures, one being the Clark Mountain Tower, which is owned by American Tower Corporation. The other is the water tank that's located at Flat Run Road in 20. And the county is constructing five new towers that will be used for this system. They're located roughly in Barbersville, on Mountain Track Road, at TAC, at the new PSAP building, which is located near the airport, and at the RSA Water Treatment Plant. So task and progress that we've been working on since my last report to you in February is we've been acquiring easements and surveys with VDOT, RSA, Tricord, and all of the electric companies for the sites. We've been working with tower site construction, system configuration and testing, working with our radio networking, which is our top groups and our counts, and with our broadband program managers' assistance, we've been starting to construct the fiber that will connect these tower sites to our backbone. To give you a brief overview of where we are with those construction sites, Site 1 is at the Barbersville Collection Site. Again, that's a 195-foot self-supporting tower that has a shelter. Half of the shelter will be used for LMR equipment, half will be used for broadband. It will be connected by fiber. The driveway for this project is going out to bid tomorrow. We're having a pre-bid conference December 4th, and bids are due December 19th. We're currently working with Rappahannock Electric on a quote, and hope to begin that and all the easements in the winter and spring of 2020. We're looking to begin the Section 106 and Phase 1 environmental in late winter and early spring, hopefully to have the site completed by April 1st. Site 2 is located adjacent to the Mountain Track Collection Center. It is also 195-foot self-supporting tower with a shelter and a fence. And again, that shelter is going to be utilized for broadband and LMR equipment. It has a separate entrance from the collection site. Construction permits were issued in September, and they began November 4th on that site. We've been working with easements and applications with VDOT and Dominion Energy. We hope to complete this site right after Christmas, right at the beginning of the new year, and fiber connectivity to that site is in progress. Here's just a brief rendering of that site. The third site is past TAC, up on the hill behind Prospect Heights Middle School. It's 150-foot self-supported tower. It again has a chain-link fence and a separate shelter system. It will have microwave and fiber connections to it. This site is also very important to our system because it houses our second core, or our second set of brains for the system. The first core will be located in the new public safety building that we're constructing, and the backup will be located at this site. We're hoping to start construction in late winter or early spring, and we're working in coordination of that construction with the town of Orange and Doug Arnold with the school system. Here's just a brief rendering of that site as well. You can see it's located adjacent to the town's water tank. Our smallest tower is going to be located at our new PSAP building by the airport. It's a 45-foot freestanding tower. It has antennas to TAC and Clark Mountain. It has fiber connectivity. Building permits we're hoping to be issued in the next few weeks, and construction to be completed by the end of February, and we're working with Dominion Energy on our Our sixth site is the RSA Water Tank at Flat Run Road. We're actually reinforcing the railings on top of the water tanking, adding our equipment there, and we've constructed a shelter that also is housing P25 equipment and broadband equipment. It will have a fiber connection. And that site, the construction is actually completed, and the last thing that we have to do there is to hook up the electric, which we expect to be done in the next few weeks. Here's a picture of the shelter. Apologize, we had to stand on top of a police cruiser to get pictures because I didn't have a key to get in the gate, so they're a little shaky. Our next site is at the RSA Treatment Plant. It's 195-foot self-supported tower. It also has a shelter that can be divided for broadband and LMR equipment. It uses microwave and fiber connections. We're working through easements with Tricord and RSA for this. Construction permits were issued in September. Fiber connectivity is in progress, and we're working with Rappahannock Electric on the easements and connections.
Real quick, that is the RSA wastewater treatment plant, correct?
Yes, sir. Apologize, thank you. And here's an aerial rendering of that. The eighth site is the leased space at Clark Mountain Tower. This is where we're using the existing tower that is owned and operated with American Tower. We have a lease with them. It is a microwave connection only. For this site, we had to install a new generator, and we had to gut and create our own room inside the bunker that's there. The exterior and interior work is completed, including the ice bridge and the generator. It's ready for equipment to be installed in the spring. That will then be tested for its connectivity to the other sites. Here's a few pictures of that location. There's our new generator and the ice bridge. Our next steps are to continue working with the tower site constructions, our electric easements, and once that's complete, late winter, early spring, we can actually start testing the system to see how it communicates, make sure that the fiber and the microwave connections are working correctly, and that our top groups are working correctly on the system. The radio orders and testing will be late winter, early spring, 2020. The installation of the physical equipment will also be late winter, early spring. That's all the servers that are right now at Harris's factory in Lynchburg will be brought up here and actually placed in the tower sites. The next phase will be actually putting in the equipment into the vehicles for our first responders and the school system. That will obviously be a phased approach, and will be done in coordination with all of those folks in the summer of 2020. Then it's infield testing, and hopefully go-live late autumn, winter of 2021.
Okay.
One of the things about, we got a, went down to the factory to take a look at this thing a few months ago. The capabilities of this system are amazing. There's a lot of things that we'll have to do, a lot of thinking about, just how to really utilize all the capabilities that this new system has.
It really does. The individual first responder will have more power in their hand than the entire system, I think, has today. Truly amazing, the technology that has developed, and the integration with the broadband initiative is, makes us a really special, high-priority project. As you can see, it's a huge project with lots of moving parts. Stephanie and the others, Dominique and Michael and others, have shepherded this thing now for, what, a year and a half at least, I guess. They deserve a lot of credit. This was not an easy rock to roll up the hill, I assure you.
It's an exciting time, and with the coordination with the fiber project, and we're putting in a new CAD system, we're going to take the level of first responders in this county to the next level.
Yeah.
Absolutely, and it's rather interesting because Mr. Wilkes referred to the fact that security would be able to talk to the county. Thirty years ago, when we got the current system that we have, that I personally believed from day one was outdated before we ever got it, prior to that, the Lake of the Woods Guard Shack dispatched all the fire and rescue calls here at the lake. After they dispatched fire and rescue from here, they would call up to town and tell the county, "We need assistance." So it's basically come full circle at this point. Rather interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Update on the retail recruitment. Mobile visitor insights and visitor acquisition solutions. Mr. Gear.
See if I can get my presentation.
You might introduce yourself for those who don't know you, Phil.
Sure.
Should have had Stephanie do that as well, sorry.
Stephanie is our Director of Management Services, which means Swiss Army, though.
She seems to be involved in almost everything we're doing.
She wears a large backpack.
Yes.
Mr. Gear, go ahead.
Sure. So I'm Phil Gear, I'm the Director of Economic Development for the county. And so I'm here to talk about our retail recruitment strategy specifically for the Germana Wilderness area as part of the GWAP. We started on this retail recruitment strategy about a year ago in October of last year. So this is our, I guess, one-year update. And so just kind of, I'm going to cut a few slides in the interest of time. So if anybody has questions, I'm happy to meet with you individually, obviously the board members, to give more information, so I'll just kind of fly through this here. Basically, the objective was to understand what retailers would be successful in the area and which ones we want. So we contracted with a company called Buckston out of Fort Worth, Texas. They're a consumer analytics company, so they would help us understand exactly what retailers would be successful here, what the spending habits are in the area. So with all of that information and data, they were able to help us identify 20 matches. And a match, again, is a retailer that they believe would be successful here and would want to come here, so we could really target our marketing and our recruitment efforts on those specific retailers, so they're not wasting a bunch of time on somebody who, excuse me, will not have any interest in coming here. This slide here is just a snapshot of the 20-minute drive-time overview. This is a very small sliver of the data that they gave us, but you can see, you know, demographic highlights. And the top household segments are kind of what you would really want to pay attention to. What a household segment is, is they basically categorize the household based on demographics, income levels, spending habits, all kinds of different things to come up with these household segments. And in the GWAP, the Route 3 corridor area, the top three household segments were fast-track couples, boomers and boomerangs, and aging in place. So those are just catchy little names. So they're essentially codes for retailers to know, again, the type of person that's there. Let's see if I can read this. A fast-track couple is an active, young, upper-middle-class suburban family, you know, income level's around $100,000. So, excuse me. Let me sip on this water real quick. So with all of that information, we were able to come up with our matches. I can't give the names of the actual retailers, but we can share the categories. So there were seven different categories, 10 of which were restaurants, three grocery stores, three department stores, a sporting goods store, convenience store, pet store, and shipping services. And so these are all nationally-recognized brand names, so they're, you know, we're not really wasting our time with too small of companies. Let's see. So really, once the matches were identified, that's when the bulk of the work for our office kind of started. We developed all new marketing materials in-house specifically to the retail industry. You know, typically, we hadn't been recruiting the retail industry. We aimed more for high-employment companies. And so what our marketing materials essentially were trying to do was, in a quick glance, let them understand where, first of all, Orange County is, and then more specifically where the Route 3 corridor is. Let them know what retailers are here, available properties, housing developments such as Lake of the Woods, obviously, and any other things that a retailer would look for before locating. And this last page over here on the right, where it says "segmentations," that was, that's our marketing for, again, those household segmentations that I covered earlier. And another thing that Buckston helped us with was to develop a playbook. So in their experience, they understand what works and what doesn't when you're talking to these retailers. And so the first step is pretty obvious. You thoroughly research the company. You examine their website, you do Google searches, you read news articles on them, social media posts, whatever it may be. You just want to understand what their product is or their service, so that you can speak to it when you're trying to recruit them. We developed an elevator pitch for each match. And so an elevator pitch sort of sounds like, you know, a script that you're reading. Well, the way, the approach we took was just kind of took, you know, bullet points. We wanted to highlight, obviously, the GWAP, the plan, that's where all the growth is going to go over the next 50 years. All of the Buckston information, you know, we just hit some bullet points, so again, we didn't want to sound like a robot. And so for four consecutive weeks, we called each one of the, each one of the matches. And then after the call, we follow up with a match report that Buckston created for us. And this is kind of some high-level data as to why they were chosen as a match, so they kind of understand what's going on there. And then for those matches that didn't respond or didn't answer the phone call, we then followed up the, we kind of backtracked a little bit and hit them every other week, trying different contacts each time. And so the general rule of thumb was to make 12 attempts to reach out to these matches, and if after 12, you're essentially probably not going to get through, so you might as well move on to the next one. But really, the main thing was to follow up with them over and over and over again, just kind of, almost be annoying, but try not to be annoying. And if, at any point, a match showed interest, we would follow up with a pursuit package that Buckston put in, and this is some more detailed information as to why they would want to come here. Obviously, we shared our marketing materials, available properties, and answered any questions that they would have, just be available any time of day, be very responsive. And then if it got to a point to when they're ready to start negotiating, we would basically hand it off to the property owner or developer to start those negotiations with us, you know, there to help and to facilitate those. And if a match says no, we consider that a maybe. So there's, you never take no for an answer.
That mean 12 more attempts?
Yeah, right. Well, we just follow up every three or four months to just kind of keep them in the loop as to what's going on here. On top of all of that, we attended the International Council of Shopping Centers. It's, the trade show is called RECON. It's the world's largest global gathering of retail professionals. There were 31,000 people in attendance. We targeted 56 retailers. 20 of those were our Buckston matches, and then the rest were the competitors of those matches. So we tried to hit all of their competitors as well. We tried to set up pre-arranged meetings for those or go visit their booth, and if they didn't have a booth, and we weren't able to set up a meeting, you know, it's kind of, we would, you'd have to just happen to bump into one of those 30,000 people. So, but we were able to get nine pre-arranged meetings, which Buckston said that we should, we would be happy with five, and so getting nine was, we were very happy with that. We also included hotels in what we were trying to recruit when we were there, which leads me into the hotel feasibility study that we're, actually just got the results back on late last week. So the reason we performed one of these, the hotel brands that we spoke with, all of them seemed interested in the area, but before they could have meaningful conversations with us, they needed third-party data on return on investment, and they need to know that they're going to be successful here if they're going to make that significant of an investment. So we contracted with Core Distinction Group to perform such a study. And so, again, we just got the results back late last week, so I'm not terribly well-versed on what it is, but we did get the recommendations that the market could support a 65 to 75-room upper-mid-scale hotel for the Route 3 corridor, and upper-mid-scale, think like Holiday Inn Express, something like that. And they also provided recommendations on what sort of amenities that should include, you know, Wi-Fi, obviously, a pool, restaurant, bar, that sort of thing. All of that is folded in there with the return on investment figures. So we'll take all of that data, and now we're going to go out and try to find the investors that are interested in investing in a hotel. Another piece of this is the EDA adopted a revised incentive policy that basically takes what we already have and allows retail establishments to kind of be eligible for those. And then we added a retail sales and accommodations tax grant. And in order to be eligible for that, their annual sales have to be no less than $5 million per location. It has to be located in the GWAP planned business, planned development business or planned development mixed-use areas, and then obviously be classified as retail trade or accommodation and food services. And so the results to date, so the implementation will not really stop probably ever, but kind of where we are, the results, we got two strong leads from the Buckston matches that we're currently working with on trying to negotiate where they're going to go. They're talking to the landowners now. One of them's a grocery store and one of them's a restaurant. We got two strong leads from the match competitors. So when we went to the ICSC trade show and we were talking to the competitors, we got two of the folks interested from there, another grocery store and restaurant. And then we got three possible leads for future developments. They told us they're not expanding right now, but when the time comes, they'd be interested in this area, so they asked us to keep in touch with them. So that's seven decent leads out of this after one year, so we're happy with that. And that's kind of where we are. Happy, sorry, I really flew through that, but I'm happy to answer any questions, whatever you may have.
I guess just one quick comment is, we've experienced in the past, stores not coming here for various different reasons, anything from the median income wasn't high enough, to surprisingly, the median income was too... to surprisingly, the median income was too high. At one point, I believe it was Dollar Store or something was going to locate at Route 20 and Flat Run Road, and the median income was too high. They were ready to build, and when they got that report back, they left town. So all of this may sound a little boring to you, but with research like this, we can really feel very confident about getting the right businesses here instead of just getting a business in and then having them fold and having an empty storefront. So this is essential for long-term development, and just have to say, Phil and his staff do a phenomenal job with this.
Well, thank you. And I don't think this is boring just for the, just for you.
All right. Well, one of the most interesting things about this is, is the ability to, using data, match the shopping habits and preferences of people that today with the appropriate retailers, because they're looking for success, and, and we certainly want them to be a success. The community wants there to be a success. And so there's some confidence that gets built because of the, the data that exists. You know, we live in a world of big data these days. This is just another example.
And it's sort of surprising when we talk to these people in terms of what information they are getting from us. You know, I mean, it's out there.
If you carry one of these, you're part of big data.
Yeah. So, I mean, by getting that level of detail, that's why they can come up with these various categories and have a better chance of identifying the appropriate business.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
All right. County Attorney's Report. Ms. Black.
Excuse me.
Oh, sorry. I skipped her one. Yeah, yeah. I looked at my, I looked at my time, and I knew I needed a rush. Sarah?
I'm on your side.
No, no. We need to see if we have any money left to spend after all these projects we're hearing about.
All right. Or if you thought that was boring, you're going to love hearing about financial information. Good evening, everyone. I'm Sarah Keeler. I'm the Finance Manager at Orange County. I'm going to kind of go over some highlights from our fourth-quarter financial report. This is a preliminary report as our numbers won't be final until the audit process is complete. Our auditors were on-site about three weeks ago, and so they are wrapping up their review process for us. The general fund revenues, the general fund year-to-date comparison, revenues were higher by four point.
Sarah, just let me point out to, so the audits understand that this is a quarterly report, but it happens to be the fourth quarter.
Correct.
So it's also the, an annual report.
Exactly.
Because of that. So this is, this is the fiscal year that ended June 30th of 19. So this is where we were as of the end of that fiscal year. Go ahead, sorry.
Correct, yes. So our general fund, the revenues were 4.1% higher than fiscal year 2018, and expenditures also increased by 3.3%. General fund property tax revenues reflect an increase of $1.9 million, which is 4.7%. Local tax also increased by $309,000. Our net sales tax increased by $187,000 over prior year. We saw an increase in our subdivision plat review fees of $26,000. Building permits were also up $16,000. And we saw a significant increase in our interest earnings, 58%. This was due to a large increase in the interest rates with our LGIP investments. Our ambulance fee revenue decreased by $113,000 compared to FY18. This decline is attributed to the trend of high-deductible health insurance plans with this, with this decreased amount available to collect from insurance companies, and then the inability to get insurance information from resident transport that led to that decrease. Recover costs increased $97,000. This increase was attributed to insurance recovery and also the Madison Solar Project. General fund expenditures reflect a total increase of $1.9 million over prior year. The largest area of this increase was transfers to other funds. Within this category, transfers to the school debt service fund and the 2016 bond capital fund increased by $2.3 million. This increase was offset by a decrease to the school operating fund of $1.2 million. The increase to the general and financial administration area shows an increase for the appraisal services of $168,000 for reassessments. Court services increased by $111,000. This is from the implementation of the new public safety wage scale as part of our FY19 budget, as well as a grant-funded, part-time position for victim witness program. Emergency communication center total expenses were up $218,000. These expenses were offset by some vacancy savings in animal control and in the animal shelter. CSA pooled expenses decreased by $286,000. This was mostly attributed to a decrease in foster care expenses of $295,000 over FY18. The community and economic development category reflects an increase of $208,000, and the EDA transferred 65, I'm sorry, that was $208,000 was towards incentive payments, which Phil just told you about for programs, and also $65,000 to retail and tourism recruitment analysis. The current projection is showing approximately $1.9 million to be added to fund balance for FY19. The increase is mainly attributed to tax revenue receipts coming in higher than budgeted. But I will note that this money will not all be available for spending as we have made appropriations in the FY20 budget already. And this number will fluctuate, awaiting any adjustments from the audit. Looking at some of our other funds, the school fund, the school operating funds used 94.7% of local funds budgeted for the year with a remaining appropriation of $1.1 million for local funds that was not, that was still available at the end of FY19. Total collected for school funds, total revenues collected for school funds totaled 93.9% and the expenditures totaled 94.8%. The social services fund and revenues came in at 88.1% of budget estimates with a total of $254,000 remaining in their local appropriation at June 30th. The debt service fund is normally solely funded by transfers from the general fund, however, as part of our capital and refinancing plan of the 29, I mean, 2016 bond issue, general funds reserves were appropriated totaling $934,000 in FY18 and $160,000 in FY19. At the end of the fiscal year, the county had spent 99.9% of the budget appropriations in the debt service fund. Our insurance internal service fund, at the end of FY19, the fund had reserves of $1.8 million for payment of future claims. For FY19, revenues exceeded expenditures by $399,000 due to lower-than-expected claim volume. Health insurance claims were budgeted at an average of $606,000 per month. Our actual came in at around an average of $511 per month. Capital budget, I'm sorry, 2016 capital budget funds, total 4.3% of the balance carried forward from FY18 was expended, and another 16 million was encumbered by outstanding purchase orders. Remaining appropriations will carry forward into future years until the projects are complete. At this time, the county has appropriations to the capital projects funds totaling $4.8 million from excess general fund revenues and has expended 53.6% of that amount. The airport rental income was 92.1% of the budget, and revenue from sales was 81.7% of budget amounts at June 30. Total airport expenditures came in at 87.9% of budget once capital expenditures and depreciation was excluded. And then we exclude those because they're not budgeted items, they're not things that cash, they're not kept cash outlays. In the landfill fund, charges for services for the landfill totaled 104% of the total budget. And although this collection continues to improve, I just want to note that the general fund largely supports this item by budget transfers of $1.9 million. Expenditures in the landfill fund show operating expenses at 97% once we back out the capital and debt service and depreciation, along with the long-term liability for closure. The average general cash balance for the fiscal year decreased by $699,000 as planned uses for the general fund reserves and other capital projects have continued. Also included in this report is a quarterly summary of the usage of the Rapid Handic Juvenile Detention Center and its effect on Orange County's contribution. At June 30, Orange had a larger portion of facility childcare days than projected. Orange used 6.62% of total childcare days rather than the 5.61 that was estimated. This resulted in a true-up billing of $36,000 at the end of the year. Those are the items I wanted to point out to you. Is there any questions?
You just spent $104 million in that list of things. I will make a quick comment. You, you just got a brief lesson in the county budgeting process. And I would like to point out that the variety of topics that Sarah covered going through there, that deal with everything from the schools and social services and landfills and, and these kinds of things, it's a, it's a very detailed, complicated process of balancing the budget every year and then keeping track of it, so.
What she described was only a portion of this small part here. This is the rest of it.
Yeah, that's right. Those truly were just the highlights. That's right.
Can read the whole thing to you if you'd like.
No, 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 no. The, the good news is, we had a really good year, yet to be audited, but we, we had a really good year. We managed the budget like a C-string on a banjo. It's a really tight act, but at least it, all the pieces came together. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, now, County Attorney's Report.
Mr. Chairman.
Assuming I didn't skip something else.
Actually, we have multiple items today.
Okay.
First item which is on the agenda is, we have a timeline for establishment of Board of Equalization. And if you recall, I think we talked about this briefly at the last meeting, with our reassessment on, currently in process, we need to appoint a Board of Equalization that can hear appeals from assessments that are made. We're a little bit behind where we were four years ago. We actually had our board appointed in October. We're still okay, but the, the way this would work is, the Board of Supervisors would make recommendations for five BOE members. We would then submit that to the Circuit Court, which actually appoints the members. After that, then they would need to get training, but from the state, which they will come, they'll actually come here and do it, you know, on-site. And then once they've done that, we, they would be sworn in effective January 1st. I, I put on the timeline November, setting a cutoff date for hearing appeals, but we really can do that in our December agenda just as easily. So what I need, what we need first and foremost is the names of the recommended BOE members so that we can submit those to the Circuit Court. I don't know if we're ready to recommend five tonight, or? We're starting on the list tonight. Well, then, may I suggest a motion that authorizes the individual board members to send me their recommendations via email?
You already have mine, don't you?
I don't think so, but.
She does, okay. She has mine.
So, so that we don't need to wait for another board meeting if I get my five names, so if you could just, a motion authorizing me to submit the five names I received from the board members.
So moved. Second.
All right. Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right.
All right. The, the other three items are late additions, and they're all suggested text amendments to our zoning ordinance. The, the first item addresses when buildings are built prior to a zoning ordinance, sometimes when a new zoning ordinance or new regulations come in, those buildings become non-conforming. In the agricultural district, we allow, actually anywhere in the county, we allow a non-conforming building, if it's residential, to be increased by up to 50% of its footprint, and if it's non-residential, only 25%. There's been a suggestion made that in the agricultural zoning area, where we have a lot of these non-conforming leases, that we change that 25% to make it 25% or 1,500 square feet, whichever is greater, just in the ag zoning district. And so the question tonight for the board is if that's something you would let me draft up.
My standing is that it's both commercial and residential would be capped at the 1,500 or the 25 and 50, whichever is greater. So it would apply both, to both residential and commercial.
Okay. Did not, did not realize that, but perfect.
Do you need a motion to get that started?
No, just three heads nodding saying yes.
You got three heads nodding. I think you do, don't you?
Yes.
Absolutely. And it may or may not be for that.
And, and what we just did, we're sending that to the Planning Commission where they will hold the public hearings and, and the formal process, and then come back to us with a recommendation. That's the, just to.
Sort of the nod of the head is to me to draft it, then I'll send it to the Planning Commission.
Right, correct. Some of the things we do are by shorthand by now, as you've seen. Okay. Sorry, I just.
The, the next item is, an issue has arisen, actually here in Lake of the Woods, where somebody is disabled, and under the Americans with Disabilities Act, they would, they would like to install a ramp that complies with Lake of the Woods regulations but not our county regulations. The current, the way that currently works, they're going to have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and actually seek a variance from the BZA. State law allows a provision in our, in our code that would allow our, our zoning administrator to just administratively grant waivers for disabilities, and that would streamline it and make it, I mean, it costs money to go to the BCA. It would streamline it and make it basically no cost to, to the citizen. And so again, if, if the board is okay with that, I will, if I get three nods, again, I will draft that ordinance and also send that to the Planning Commission.
If I could, just one quick footnote on that. Under the BZA, they would have to approve the variance. They have no latitude to turn down such a variance because the state law says if it's, qualifies for American Disability Act accommodation, they have to approve it. So it really is kind of meaningless for them to go to the BZA. The other thing is, is particularly with this ramp for a resident here at the lake, if you all nod your heads, then I will have the permit issued tomorrow to have the contractor build it, subject to you all updating the ordinance probably in a couple of months, which gets us going, you all, then I can deal with this current situation, and then all the other situations coming down the pike with something like this.
You're mistaken, but I think you got the three nods all right.
Three more heads nodding.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the final item is, as you know, we have a, in Barbersville, we have an overlay district, and we have a Barbersville Advisory Committee that reviews development proposals in the overlay district. Currently, that advisory committee has three members. There's been a suggestion that we increase that to five. Again, that's a zoning, it's in our zoning ordinance, so again, if three of you nod your heads, I'll change the ordinance and start the process.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
With that, I'm done.
Okay. All right. Let me do a time check here. It is 7:10. Are we, do we have the flexibility to get through our last couple of agenda items?
Yeah, the next two.
I don't know who's, who controls the.
I'm looking at the general manager back there, and he's nodding his head.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure to check. Okay, County Administrator's Report. Legislative priorities for 2020.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you've had under development since first meeting in August. Development of your priorities for the upcoming 2020 General Assembly session. They've gone through various iterations. You last had this at the beginning of October. Wanted some more thought on, one of the priorities dealing with water quality measures under what is called Phase 3 of the Water Shave Implementation Plan issued by the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. I sent this out to you, I think it was late yesterday, with that refinement. Hopefully, you've had a chance to see it. So we're at a point now, my recommendation is to approve as drafted, and then I would distribute it to our General Assembly members and ask them to support these positions during the upcoming General Assembly session.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion at second. Any discussion, questions? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. These are. These are, if you have a chance to look at these at some point, you should. It covers state funding for teacher pension liability and Children's Services Act and the roads, water quality, broadband, workforce development, transportation, education funding, the environment, and on and on and on. I mean, it's a, health services, it is a, quite a package that we're recommending to the General Assembly, that they consider putting in, in their bills as they develop them later this year.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I will make a footnote. All of these presentations will be on our website and linked to the agenda, so you'll be able to go through this. Because I'm going to give you all an update now on, on another project, and this is a buckle-up time because there's going to be very dense, but I'm going to move through it fairly quickly and be able to hit some high top, high points with, with this matter. The county's EDA, Mr. Doug Rogers, Chair of it, I don't know if Doug's here tonight. Don't, don't see Doug. Yeah. So, one of the things that, and Mr. White has been Vice Chair, or is, of the Rappahannock River Basin Commission. At the end of the day, Orange County, along with Essex County, has been participating in a, in a project for the last, gosh, four or five years, four years now, something like that, of how the state can meet water quality goals for the Chesapeake Bay Commission through the Chesapeake Bay Water Quality Improvement Efforts. That's multi-state. This is U.S. EPA, District Columbia, Pennsylvania, Maryland, and Virginia. One of the things that Orange County and Essex County downriver of the Rappahannock River have been working on is how to use healthy woodlands, how to use woodlands as a proxy for water quality. I won't go too far into the weeds on this, but healthy trees create great water quality for the bay. The EPA has not taken that into recognition in their modeling, and the state is advocating that it should. Well, how do you incentivize landowners to either maintain their forest, avoid conversions to other land uses, or actually reforest? And so we've moved to a point now where Orange County is actually beginning a process of implementing a, an incentive program for landowners that uses carbon credits, monetizing carbon capture by trees. We're the only place in the state that's getting ready to do that, and the county's EDA is actually the entity that was just the benefit of some enabling legislation that was passed by this last General Assembly, 99 to zero, or excuse me, one. There was one senator vote against it. She was for it, but she didn't like EDA, so she said she was against it.
Just to give you a headline, what this project, it's a pilot program, really does, is it rents the trees in Orange County. Landowners that have either small acreage or large acreage go, enter into a long-term lease through our EDA, such that there's a revenue stream to those landowners to incentivize them to keep their trees or plant new trees, as Brian said, on a long-term basis. And in essence, is they're allowed to, this is a rental payment for maintaining their trees. That's the simple view of what's going on. But since each landowner can't do this all by himself, the EDA is allowed to consolidate, and that's one of the, the benefits that the state has given us. Right. The EDA would be able to broker the relationship among the various landowners, small and large.
One of the things that, there's about a two-inch, inch-and-a-half report that just was released last month, end of September. It's linked to this agenda item on our website, and I would encourage you, if you have more interest in what we're doing, this is there, and Orange County, I'm proud to say, figures very prominently in it. Real quick, as you know, forestry, healthy woodlands are, are starting to decline down. And if we're able to turn the trend and maintain what we have, but also incentivizes how to monetize these woodlands beyond just their timber value. And oftentimes, parcel owners of 20-acre trees really have no, no timber value to those trees. This is an opportunity for them to realize some type of financial benefit from, from those smaller woodlands. What we're going to deal is with carbon credit. Right now, these trees are capturing carbon. And this is whether, you know, climate change or any, however you want to call it, that's beside. There are a number of Fortune 500 global companies, airlines, shipping industry, data centers, that want to offset their carbon footprint, and they're looking for the ways to do it. Solar, wind aren't going to generate. Those are, those are more prospective technology efficiencies and things. It's about what can we, what can they do to offset their current carbon footprint? And this is the way that carbon credits are, are created. And the improved forest management, avoided conversion, meaning Phil's out there trying to get hotels to cut down trees, and this program is to offset that and reforestation. Carbon is measured, and this is really, it gets way down into kind of the higher math of this, because carbon tons per acre is measured in the tree, the canopy, the forest litter, and down actually into the roots. These are in vintage years. These carbon credit contracts on a woodland could go 20 years, 30 years, and for hardwoods, up to 40 to 60 years. This is a revenue stream that will come over time as these carbon credits are purchased. The process is an annual measurement, so these trees will grow some increment, and there's a statistical analysis. Not every tree is measured. It's a 90%, confidence interval. Each year, through drones, through foresters going out on these tracts of land, these property owners have voluntarily, voluntarily contracted to receive payments from those that buy these carbon credits. Each year, these trees will grow X. It can be computed how many tons of carbon per acre per year. That ton of carbon is then monetized and can be bought by anyone from anywhere in the world to offset their carbon footprint. Shell Oil is, is working towards setting, offsetting their carbon footprint by 2050. Their sea-level executives' compensation is now tied to getting Shell Oil carbon-neutral. The airlines are about to get into the game, and then behind them, the maritime industry because of the diesel fuel. The train industry is getting here, too. This is a really small sprint on this slide, but this is kind of the concept of how the EDA will interface with the carbon market, the carbon brokers, and facilitate the landowners. What, what comes about all of this is that this is aggregation. Sure, a 20-acre forest woodland owner could go out and try to go to Shell and say, hey, I'll sell you the credits off of my 20 acres. Shell writes checks in denominations of 10, 50, 100 million dollars. There's just no way a 20-acre landowner is going to be able to access the market and realize any value. So the idea is to take those 10, 20, Montpelier could potentially be a big beneficiary of this. They may have about 2,000 acres. The dollars that we're talking about are shown on this example of a 1,400-acre tract. This is based on values, I forget when the year, because each year, these values are created. But this 1,400 acre over 20 years was little over $3 million. That was $3 million. Now, does this mean that the person can't cut the trees? Absolutely, they can. Because what will happen is that thinning will speed up the growth of these tracts if they're professionally managed. The second point of this is that once they harvest them, they're incentivized to go back and reforest them, replant them. And then for, for landowners, this becomes a revenue stream beyond just the traditional harvesting for timber. There's real value out there. I was, like many people, pretty skeptic about this. This is, this is for real. These companies are publicly traded companies. They have to demonstrate their, their social investment and how they're offsetting their carbon emissions. And so a lot of the Fortune 50 companies, 500 companies, what have you, that are publicly traded, have to start demonstrating that they're offsetting the carbon. Technology's not going to get there. It's going to be through forestry and agriculture. There.
Just a comment, right, just to put it in context, using your 1,400-acre example, that sounds like a lot of land, and it is a lot of land, but the state forestry estimates that in Orange County, we have something like 137,000 acres of forest. So it's a big deal. When this was presented to some of the landowners through the Farm Bureau back several months ago, they, by, that was on a Thursday night, I think it was by Monday morning, they had something like 5,000 acres. People wanted to have their property tested to see if they would qualify for this program. So the numbers speak for themselves in terms of the scale. It's, it's not a small matter, and it, and it, you know, could benefit the, the landowners, forest owners of the county in a very meaningful way.
And the other part of this is we're, we're, we're it. We're in Orange County, the EDA, certainly Phil and his colleague Rose, and with Mr. White's leadership on Rappahannock Basin Commission. I'm in pretty good contact with the State Secretary of Agriculture, Bettina Ring. Secretary Ring has taken a personal interest. They're going to help fund some grants for us to, to get this model up and running. But one of the other parts of this is that the EDA should be able to realize some revenue off of this because of their authority under the state code to aggregate this acreage. What the EDA then could do with its proceeds from this is invest it in traditional economic development activity like industrial parks, creating jobs, and attracting business investment. This is right in the EDA. Why the EDA? The EDA is set up to bring dollars from outside Orange County in to being spent through payroll and investment. This is doing exactly the same thing the EDAs are structured to, bringing dollars instead to businesses, to individual landowners who then can then invest as they see fit. And so some of this has got this awe of really people paying for the, for the green. It, it's for real. It's for real. And what we're trying to do is to create something that will be lasting over decades for, for landowners here in the, in the community. So I'll stop.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Board comment? Anyone have?
Yeah, I've got a couple of ideas.
Okay.
First of all, I talked to the Commissioner of Revenue Day today, and she says that the reassessments should be out any day now. She's told me that about a week ago, so we'll see how it works. Second, I'd like to thank the clubhouse for providing shuttles during the voting last Tuesday when, when, when it was dark in the morning and dark at night, they were providing shuttles for the voters. Really appreciate that. We just returned from a VACO conference. The primary purpose of that is to establish something very similar to our legislative agenda, but it's much broader and covers a much wider variety of targets. The Virginia Association of Counties is basically our lobbying organization down at the Virginia General Assembly. And so there's a lot of deliberation on this. I sit on two of the steering committees, one on general government and one on health and human resources. Basically, they are identifying things that the counties would like to see happen at the General Assembly, and the, the VACO people are actually doing the lobbying for us on a, on a day-to-day basis down at the, when the General Assembly's in session. And finally, I'd like to thank everybody attending tonight. We don't normally see, unless we have a very hot zoning issue or something like this, we don't normally see this many people at a, at a meeting, and I would like to thank everybody that came here tonight for their attendance.
Mr. Currier?
No, I don't have anything to say, Mr. Chairman, except that we did attend the VACO conference and believe it was very beneficial and worthwhile for the county.
Yeah. I'd just like to thank Lake of the Woods for hosting us this evening and all of you for coming out, as, as Lee said, very, very often, other than staff reporting to us, we don't see a lot of participation. I'm encouraged that you're here. I thank you for taking the time. Also, thank those of you that, that did vote last, was it last week? I've lost track of the days. I guess it was last week. It was a beautiful day, so there weren't many excuses other than it was dark and...
We took care of that.
And I'll tell you, at 6 o'clock Tuesday morning down at Mine Run when I was there, I was glad I found a coat, a large coat in my vehicle that I didn't know was in there. It was, it was quite chilly, but thank you all for your participation. It really is helpful, and hopefully, we make it informative because we, we do deal with a lot of topics, as you see. Speaking of a lot of topics, any questions on the information items?
No.
Okay. Any appointments? Okay. Calendar item, we are, have left on there the scheduling of a public hearing for zoning violations on, at our December 3 meeting.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. So that'll get added to the calendar item. All right. That completes our agenda, except for our recess and having, sharing a dinner with the Lake of the Woods Board of Directors. We'll cover it at that. Thank you all again.
Mr. Chairman, quick question.
We can adjourn.
Yeah, unless you're planning on conducting county business, we can just go ahead and adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right. We, we are adjourned. Thank you.